So. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Shoot me a message.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. When you say um.
Will do.
All right, good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and call uh the planning commission meeting order is uh six thirty. Um and let's go ahead and start with the roll call, Kelly.
Uh Commissioner Crosby.
Here.
Commissioner Pullen.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Ramsay.
Here.
Um Commissioner Vincent. Let uh Chair Wiganer and I know that she cannot make it tonight due to a work obligation, so we're gonna write her as excuse them, Minister of Leachery.
Yep.
Um Commissioner Myron. He is not online and Chair Wiganer.
Here. Thank you very much. Uh now let's go to the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting. If uh does anybody have any adjustments that need to be made?
No.
No exceptions. All right, hearing none, we will consider the minutes from the previous meeting approved. Um now we move to uh uh folks who are in the room or online who would like to address uh planning commission. Uh the commission welcomes your comments at this time. Uh we do have a hearing later tonight related to the Tickle Creek Village temporary trailer appeal. Uh and we'll hear those comments at that time. Uh but if anybody has any other comments, uh feel free to uh let us know. I don't see any, so I'll just go to the one person in the room. But I think he's here for ladies, so excellent. We will move right along. Uh Kelly, Director's Report.
Yeah, so we're not having a meeting in July. I didn't have anything for the meeting with uh the moratorium right now. We just don't have one. Larger development applications than obviously. Um we will be holding most likely a public hearing regarding the conference of plan adoption. Uh legislative hearing on August twenty sixth. If we can get enough people to attend that night, it might be sunny like tonight and uh might have low attendance, I'm not too sure. And then after that, I I really don't know. I think I think uh if the chair and I sit down, we could probably talk through kind of the remaining schedule for the year. I think would probably be the best thing to do, so we might want to schedule some time to do that, I was thinking.
Okay.
Um some updates. The conference of plan update, as I just said, is coming back before you. Uh we did the work session on May twentieth. We're now making adjustments based on some feedback we got. Um if you have any additional feedback for those that couldn't attend on May twentieth, please send it to us right away. Um and if you don't have any, that's fine as well. We did get quite a bit of feedback from Counselor Hokinson, Commissioner Lee and D L C D, so we we had a lot of stuff to edit and modify. Um just wanted to let you all know, the land use approval extension ordinance was approved by the city council exactly as you had all recommended, and so there is a process to include it to your extension request. One of our staff members and fellow colleagues up in City Hall, David Snyder, unfortunately due to the moratorium um and a lack of economic development projects upcoming, his position's being terminated as of August first, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. He's worked at the city for almost thirteen years now. Um so it's it's a bummer um. He actually worked under the department that I oversee for about four or five years, and then he went back to city administration, so we'll really miss him. He does a lot of handholding with our local business community. Um so I think they're I think they're really gonna miss him.
Great.
Hmm. The last thing I wanted to let you know is about the moratorium. So I had I had an update in here when I put this out, I think on the last day of May. We since that time, we issued, I think, seven more ERUs. The council also adopted the new moratorium resolution. So that has a lot of different clauses and different procedures in it than the old one that we had. And we also have an additional two hundred and seventy ERUs to give out to the development community. Unfortunately, the five seventy that we negotiated with EPA and DQ um is not enough to release new development applications, at least not at this time. There might be a scenario where if not everybody applies for the ERU allocations, that is the program that's assigned in this new moratorium resolution. There might be a scenario where we have some left over to get out, but I think the number would be so low that most likely the city would probably want to keep on to those for situations such as failed subject systems and stuff like that. I don't think it would be a high enough number to do a program release on. And then the only other thing I was gonna say about this is, at this point, we're doing the ERU allocations with everybody that has land use approval. My best guess is we're looking at I don't know, two plus years probably before the next big sewer treatment plant expansion operations are up and running and DQ and EPA approve the additional hundred and ninety ERUs. It could be less than that, it could be more than that, but I'm guessing somewhere between eighteen months and two years. That's probably what we're looking at at this point. Um I was in some of the negotiations with EPA and DQ and you know, those negotiations went on for six months and it was very difficult to move the needle. Uh we tried our hardest and we did move the needle quite a bit. Um five seventy is more than the original number was going to be, so we we fought really hard for the development community and for people that already have existing land use approvals, and we're at a place now that we believe we have enough ERUs to cover everybody that's in the pipeline or everybody that's applied and been approved. Unfortunately, though, we don't have more than that at this point. Um and so that that's one of the reasons why uh David's position was being looked at to not continue for a a year or two, because we're not even gonna have additional capacity, most likely for new commercial industrial development for a couple of years. So. And there'll be more to come on that. We don't we don't know exact timeline. Um probably the quickest thing to do would to increase the size of the equalization basin, so that's where all the sewage is held until it then goes through the processing plant and the clarifiers and then it's actually released either into the creek or brought over to Isley Nursery to spray on all the um nursery uh vegetation that they have out there. But even building an equalization basin or making it larger, several million dollars, there's a lot of permitting. It's getting and then after that, after we actually get the construction finished, then we're gonna have to go back to EPA and DQ. I don't think that's gonna be six months like last time, but it's gonna be several months probably if you, I mean, dealing with federal government takes well. Um so that's kind of where we're at with that. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the moratorium or anything I covered.
Were those seven ERUs that were issued, were those kind of expected or were those?
They were, they were, they were, they were part of the five seventy. So right now, I believe if you go on our website right now, I believe we've issued a hundred and eighteen point eight ERUs, I believe. And so we have, what would that be? Four hundred and fifty one point two ERUs remaining. I believe most likely four hundred and forty eight, four hundred and forty nine are spoken for. Um so that leaves us with a couple of ERUs which it's a couple of subject connections, raise all that is. We, you know, we have two or three subject tanks that I'm aware of in R U G B that are failing right now, and we're trying our hardest to work with Clackamas County to allow replacement systems. Um I think even one of them is on slightly less than an acre, which usually they make them connect to our system if that's the case. But we're we've been telling Clackamas County that the sewer line is physically available, but because of our limitations with EPA and DQ, it's not really legally available. Now, if the county won't accept it, then there is a clause in the consent degree that we have with the federal government to allow the connection to occur because of a health emergency is what it's declared. However, we still have to count it as an area. So um yeah, it's it's not, it's a it's a much better situation than we were in last October when we submitted our reporting to DQ and EPA, but obviously we would we would like to have a couple hundred more ERUs to have more development occurring. So it's better than it could have been, but it's not as good as we were hoping.
Right, may I ask you a quick question about the application process? I may be asked by a couple of people to do that. Do you want us to use the applicant, the development application to get signatures on, or are you gonna have a separate application form or something? I mean, we can talk about it later, but.
Do you want me to answer the question?
If it's quick.
Um for.
For the allocation.
For the. Oh, we have a separate form for that.
Oh, there's a separate form, okay.
Yeah, we I can send it to you. I'll send it to you in the morning.
Cause it didn't seem like the development application would be the right form.
It's not. We have a different, we have a different one. I'll send it to you in the morning.
All right, thank you.
We we talked to each other on the phone.
All right, thanks a lot.
So that's kind, that's kind of the the update I have. I I would have had that all outlined in here, but I I released this before the the meeting last Monday night.
Gotcha, so. All right, well, thank you, Kelly. Uh just for the record, it looks like Commissioner Myron has joined us online and I also see Counselor Maiten. I'll kind of put him on the spot if he has anything he would like to share.
Oh, here we go. Hi, everyone. I don't have anything. I just wanna reach out and say what a great job uh the planning commission has done in the the last couple of things that brought in front of the council and commend Kelly on the hard work um him and his staff have done to uh to help get that moratorium um at least to where it's at today, so thank you.
And thank you. Uh but this time, I'll open the floor to, well, us, uh if there's anything that you all would like to discuss or uh break forward. All right, uh which will bring us right along to our new business, which is uh the Tickle Creek Village Temporary Trailer Appeal. Um so we'll officially open the public hearing at six uh forty two. It's going to be file number two four dash zero two eight. Um and I will call for any abstentions from the hearing body. Um hearing none, any conflicts from the hearing body. Uh finally, any uh ex parte contact, including site visits.
I drive by at least two times a day.
Me too. Same.
Lots of driving by, excellent. All right, uh and now I'll call for any challenges to members of the hearing body. All right, um perfect. All right, um and then at this time, we will go ahead and uh leave here from staff report.
Good evening, everybody. Um I have a a little PowerPoint I wanna go into, kinda give a little bit more background um on this case.
Just click on the PowerPoint then, I think it will show up.
There, okay. So this essentially just give a little bit more background um on this case and um maybe a little bit wider view than what was um provided for you with the staff report. And yeah, for those who don't drive by it every day, it's actually a larger site than kind of what it appears to be when you're driving by, uh because the whole entire site includes the area to the north of it, which is um all designated open space um doesn't get wetlands, protected uh vegetation, so so there is kind of a demarcation line between the development and then all of the 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 natural area to the north. To basically just give a little bit of background again on the um how we're here. So this is the second request. The the development was approved back in January of twenty twenty, I believe. And they um started construction and applied for a temporary trailer and received um the approval. And typical temporary structures or temporary um construction trailers, they're approved as a type one for one year. Any type of um renewal of that becomes a type two, then just goes out to a notification. And so when we, so when they initially um applied for the the temporary structure on an initial construction, um they never renewed it at that point. The trailers that you saw for the kind of the two years, they were just kind of left over for that original approval. But they came back to us this year um back in April for the uh renewal, and that's where we're at today is we did an initial type two, did the notification, gave a recommendation, um and our recommendation boiled down to what we typically see or allow for certain construction projects as um allowing for one trailer, although they asked for two. And so their appeal on this is um that they uh for their reasons that they expressed and that were expressed in the um in their letters and in the staff report that was attached um uh was the reason for their appeal. So I just go a little bit further um on this um. So this is just a a wider view of the site. You can see where the density occurs down um in the southern part of the site. You can see the the diffraction in the acreage of open space to development. It's actually like almost two to one um. So uh the so this is just a little bit, little bit more. You can kind of see the the actual this black dotted line that you see there. Um that is that is the proposed trail that goes. It's kind of the line that separates the open space from the development part of the site. And this is something that wasn't included in your packets, but just little um introduction to what the finished design of of these condominiums will be. There is a mixture of two bed or two unit and three unit, these ones that we're showing here, this kind of the this rear elevation look. You can see that the third condominium, on the front view, they're side by side, two condominiums, and then third one is kind of going down in the back and kind of a sub layer. This slide shows a little bit more where the trailer location is gonna be. Um obviously, they're already there, so if you drove them by, you've you've kind of seen them and you've you've seen that they are kind of shielded. They're not they're not extremely visible or um or exposed. But I wanted just to kind of bring this up because there is, again, that's the demarcation line of um they did a planting restoration plan, which is complete, all of their um soil erosion control uh fencing is already up, so it's protecting um this area. Um I think even they did a lot of work on the trail recently. Um I was told that the trail is now very walkable, but I think that was part actually of the planting restoration plan. They wanted to have that all kind of um done completed as they kind of move forward into the construction uh period. Cause a lot of times we will go and just spot inspect to make sure that the um retention trees have their protection still up, so erosion controls up. Um so so you know, they're they're doing everything right. They're all set up for for construction. This is now getting what was included with their request for the location of the trailers. Um they're basically right off the front, off of uh Debarco Road um just west of the building A, and they have pulled three permits, or I think they pulled two permits so far on buildings A and X. And I think we have another one in on on for Y, and X and Y, I believe, are right on backing right up to Debarco Road. Um some pictures of the trailers. One trailer is essentially gonna be um for their uh construction planning um conference. They probably uh rested from uh rainy weather when that happens. And the other one is just kind of open storage. Um I know they have a a little four by that the um ATB that they get around the site on. And um and then just back to what our recommendation was, was to stick with the original um the original final order decision to just include one um trailer. I know right now, again, the the trailer that they do uh expresses being more for storage, doesn't really have the space for them to kind of lay out plans and and you know, kind of talk over whatever the um the daily schedule is. Um so we kind of threw in a little bit of a caveat to say maybe it just be temporary, maybe something that you guys think of um as a condition that that the two trailers would be allowed um until maybe one of their models becomes available for that type of um situation. So um so we're we're open to that. Thought we just saw that as as you know, to your discretion. Um but again, we still stick by our original decision of just allowing the one trailer.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise. That is an area where theft could easily occur, so I I like the idea that someone is able to be there to protect.
Thank you. Uh we'll now call for the, or sorry, were you done, Patrick?
Pardon?
We all done?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Uh we'll now call for the applicants' presentation.
Let me go over here.
Please, yeah, wherever, and probably here we can hear you better. I guess.
Evening, I'm Tracy Brown, uh one seven zero seven five for Drive and Sandy. So yeah, I think uh Patrick went over the little bit of the history. Um yeah, like he said, uh some of the units are three, include three units, two side by side, and there's one around the back and the the buildings to the, I guess it'd be the south of the side or just two units, because they're kind of um kind of dug into the grounds. There's really not practical to have a third unit. Um yeah, I mean, this whole thing is um the, you know, the developers asked me to represent him. I I was involved in submitting the original application back in two thousand nineteen, and it's been a long haul for the developer for various reasons. There was issues regarding the sewer location that the city wanted that went right through the property and he had to relocate, and then COVID came into place, and then he lost his funding and uh so he's regained the funding and he's anxious to get going. And like Patrick said, we fairly recently, he's got some building permits to actually do work besides his site ru- work and underground. So you know, the reason he asked for the two trailers is because he really thinks he needs them. You know, he's been doing this for thirty plus years and it would be very difficult and cumbersome not to have the second storage trailer because he he needs a place for his onsite foreman. He doesn't, it's not gonna be living there, but just during the day can go in there, look at the plans and stage to instruct the people that are working on site. So um yeah, so when he when he applied, we applied for two of them because that's what he felt he needed. You know, I I go, I look around town and, you know, for example, over at the park that the city's building, there's three of them over there. As far as I can tell, there's only two permits. Um so they originally had one one permit, and the second one went in, another permit was issued. Now there's a third one, but no permit issued. It so we're we're just trying to do the right thing, get the job done, and it fills that little micromanagey, we'll say, to determine how many you know, storage facilities that a person needs on their site. You know, he's really the best person to determine that. You know, there was some problem in the past, and he admits that that um there was an original permit issued for one trailer, and then he moved in a second trailer thinking it might have been covered under the original approval, and then for various reasons they weren't removed after the year or reapplied. And you know, he's kind of sorry for that. And he, I guess he learned the hard way that um he needs to follow those rules of if there's, if it's going to exceed the one year to reapply and make sure that's reinstated. So I don't think that will be a problem. I'm not really involved in the day to day operation, so I'm not keeping track of that kind of stuff. But I've instilled in him to say, you know, if the planning commission does approve these two uh trailers, you better keep track of the timelines because it kind of looks bad to me, you know, but I'm arguing on his behalf uh to get that approval, and then he's not following through with the obligation. So we really hope that you kind of see the light and realize that um you know, he's really the best person to know. And you know, like the pictures show, one of them is purely storage, the other one's for his guy. Um we, he does have a little problem with the recommendation that one of the, you know, at some point, when one of the units is ready, that it can be converted into a sales office. This is a little different than a typical subdivision, because in a subdivision there would be a home typically that would be unto itself. And this is a condo project. There's gonna be three individual units for sale in that one building, and it would be really cumbersome to have construction materials around where people are trying to live right there. So we would really prefer that those two conditions uh just go away and um that he be allowed to have the two trailers um for the year and be required to reapply. Um you know, with the caveat for certainly that no one lives in them, you know, it's all maintained and things like that. You know, he understands all that. So I don't know if you have any questions for me about the, any of the details about the site. I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Uh, thank you. I think we'll anybody have any questions before? Excellent alternate, uh Patrick, I believe. Oh wait, first we'll call for public testimony. Nobody's here, so we'll move right back into uh staff recap and recommendation.
Well, I just just want to point out that you know, the um the decision for only having one trailer wasn't punitive or anything because of what happened in the past. Um this was just something, again, um being on dozens and dozens of sites, construction sites, typically you see one. I I think in this case probably it wasn't, he's he's been using that this type of scenario for so long on his developments instead of having what you have as, you know, a typical construction trailer where you can kind of have maybe a little bit of both. Um but this is the style that he chose to do, so um I mean, I could see it going both ways, but again, we still stand by the fact that believe one trailer should be enough um. And uh with the caveat, if if you know, moving it into that um the unit that the first condominium that he's building is building A, which is directly adjacent um. So it's not like on the other side or anything like that. Still would be convenient um and they could manage it to where um it just becomes an office and not a place for construction materials.
Yeah, I'll I'll add a couple of things onto that. So the, so one thing is that I think part of the issue for me at least, and I think from several people that we've received complaints from, and it's the same with um Mr. Alexander's comment in the packet. It's and we can talk about this during the work session as well, because I think it's a prime thing to talk about. I think it's the type of trailers that are being used. They're not construction trailers. They are RVs for living. And so as you're probably aware of, we can regulate people living in RVs now for homeless situations, and the only place they can live in Sandy if they're homeless in a trailer is on industrial way between three sixty second and the terminate, the termination of it into Sibyl's Farms. And that's because the city has to designate an area for overnight accommodations for people that are Um, homeless. And so currently, that is the only case in which people can sleep in trailers. I think like based on Mr. Alexander's comments, it does kind of start to give the appearance of a, of an encampment. Um, if you go up to like. Hoodview um, Heights up off of Vista Loop, uh, they have more of a professional. Trailer that they got through, through a permit that they've installed out there, um. Mr. Brown brings up a good point on the uh. The Sandy Community Campus site, I was not aware of a third temporary structure, so we'll go look at that and handle that serving tomorrow. They have done permits for two, that is a totally different situation, though, they have two general contractors running the project. One's American Rent Company, the other one's, I'm blanking on the name. That aren't even associated with each other, that are doing separate contracts with the city. Where this project that we're speaking about tonight is under one general contractor, so it's 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 not, it's not apples to apples in my opinion, uh, but it is a good point. Uh, but even in that case as well, I think one of them is a storage container, and the other one that I'm aware of is, again, a professional construction trailer. So it i- it is an odd thing. To have such a large development, such as like sixty-seven condo units. With RVs set up as the construction trailers. I've never seen that. So I I think that's part of the issue, that a few of the people that did send in comments, or they're not part of the record because they were done through the. Um, complaint system that we now have through our website for code enforcement, we did receive a couple things through there. It's, it's not that there's trailers, it's that there's RVs sitting out on the site, and like. Mr. Brown said they've been sitting there since, or one of them has been sitting there since two thousand nineteen. That's five years, that's not a temporary situation at that point, so. I think that's, I think the bigger issue, more so than there being two or there being one. From what I've heard from the public and. Everything else, so. Um, and then just what Patrick said, I think is, is correct as well.
All right, uh, Mr. Brown, you have not to me for five minutes for rebuttal if you'd like.
Yeah, I guess there's a couple things in that, um. Yeah, the trailer hasn't been there since two thousand nineteen. Um, that trailer that was requested in two thousand nineteen has been removed. Um. I guess the city is, I much. Does the city really want to regulate design standards of contemporary structures? And so who's going, what are the standards? There's nothing in the code that says they need to be looking like a construction trailer, or an RV, or a. Cadillac, there's nothing that says anything about the color, the materials, look, I understand that it does look. Um, different than some. Uh, construction projects, but there is nothing, this is a, was originally a type one decision. Which should be, which should be over the counter generally. And non-discretionary. So there should, there, there are no design standards in the code. Regarding the look and materials of these structures, so. To decide that now, suddenly we don't think that looks. Good, I think is a violation of the code. And, you know, the intent of this type one. Originally a type one process, it's only a type two if it goes. If it's renewed, and then it's only come to you because he's appealed, so. I hope that you don't start. Deciding how many. And what they need to look like, are they brown or green or blue, do they have to look like sandy style colors? Um, I think that's just kind of excessive, you know, and all this stuff. Really. At least for this particular developer, knowing how much he takes his stuff to heart. This is just all a distraction in him getting the project built. Unfortunately. And uh, you know, he calls me about it and Vince to me about it and. I say, yeah, let's, let's just get this handled, I know really you want to get those buildings built. And that's, I'm sure the city wants to see the buildings built too, so this is just like a bunch of distraction that we don't really. Doesn't uh. I don't see how it really benefits anybody, all right, that's my consent, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, moving on to our discussion, uh, if anybody has any questions uh, for the applicant, uh. We could ask them now, or start a discussion, or uh, we can uh. Look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Who said that the first trailer that was put on, so. If I understand correctly, there was a permit, and then there was a trailer put on the property, uh, do you know when about that trailer was removed from the property?
Not sure.
You made a statement that it was removed, and then the second trailer put on, do you know when this one was put back on?
I don't know, they, they, the city may know better than I do, so. Yeah, there was an original permit, and that was taken out by the contractor, so the. The developer has hired a contractor, and. The contractor felt he needed a place to have lunch. Basically, you know, and so he got that permit, um. The city has the date on that, and then that stayed there for a while, and then the developer. Felt there was a need to have some storage, and so he moved a second one on there. Not knowing he needed a permit. That, I think it was somewhere in twenty twenty, maybe. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um. The tra- that trailer that's now used for storage is the same trailer. It's not the original one, if that makes sense, and then the. The new onsite manager has moved his own. Trailer to be used as his office onto the site. So there's a storage and then there's the office trailer. I don't know if that answers your question.
It gives me an idea.
How often is the site manager onsite and what's being done on the site? How much are they actually working with the more?
Oh, they're working quite a bit, yeah, I mean, they've, they're starting to form up. Those, you know, so he has building permits for, I think, A and B and at least two of the units. And now we have to, he wants to, he has plans ready to submit the other units, but first we need to get the ERU allocation form. So the site manager is there daily, you know, five days a week.
So there's no current building actually nails hammers going on right now.
It's forming up.
So we don't need. Without anything physically being built, there doesn't. Why would there need to be a certain trailer for supplies if nothing is? Happening hands-on right now, developers can. You know. If the one trailer's there, the developer can, can be in that one and take phone calls and eat their lunch. If there's no construction going on, I don't see a reason to have a second trailer. For supply storage when there's nothing going forward that would reply.
Well, if you were to look on the inside, it's full of stuff. Um, and I don't know, we have the pictures, one of the thing that is in there. Is about two week, two or three weeks ago, the onsite foreman had knee replacement, and so he, he now has a little. Uh, ATV that he can go around the site and that is stored in there. If they didn't have that, I'm not sure where they would store it exactly. Um, but there are brooms, there are other supplies, there's saws and things like that in there. Because there are forms being built, made, and there's a lot of underground work and conduit that's been laid, I mean, there's. It may look like a bare site, but there's thousands and thousands of dollars of. Stuff under the ground there. Yeah, there's fencing that needs to be fixed and. You know, they just had some landscapers out there recently, so there's um, wheelbarrows and shovels and things like that. You know, it's all site improvement, so there's quite a bit in there. Are there other questions?
Now look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Seconded.
All right, motion seven oh eight. There's a motion to close the public hearing, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh. All right, uh, open discussion, anybody want to start us up?
The RV is an eyesore. It looks out of place. It's. In the dirt, the hitch is towards the road. Um. I just don't. The two units seems excessive at this point with what is not going on onsite. It seems to me like. Uh, I believe. Uh, Mr. Brown, is that correct? Rules are a distraction. For this developer and um. Clearly, because he let the first trailer lapse and went a couple of years and didn't bother to reapply and then put the second one on without. Any permission or uh. Um. Letting us know, I guess is the word I'm looking for. Um. I mean. I think. With what's going on, two trailers is excessive, um. I would like to see the RV replaced with something a little more professional, construction-wise, and maybe. If we, if the developer did that, we could get a bigger actual construction unit and then eliminate the need for two. If they make them a certain size, we don't have to have two. Thirty-four feet. Maybe they could go a bigger one, that would make more sense to have the office, the office, the lunchroom, the storage area for the limited things that are. That seem to be in there now.
I have a question for staff, do we have to reopen?
No, no.
Um. So. Shed permit? What's the requirement for a shed permit?
Um, like on a residential property?
Yeah, like, like, so what I'm pondering here is if. One of them is being used as a shed. And it's not, some sheds, it's not up to us to decide what they look like. And that's what I'm hearing, one of these is, is for tools and for, um, and I know that some sheds don't need to be permitted. Um, if there was an unpermitted shed that sit, was, I. The size of this, would we be having this discussion on that property?
If, if the shed's two hundred square feet or small or less, then we don't require a building permit. It's so estimated by requirements and everything. We don't really have a lot of standards for the design of sheds, except if it's used as a detached garage. Then we do have design standards that they have to follow. Um. Yeah, I, I think part of the work session that we'll be talking about is, should we be having more regulations on structures and use of temporary uses? Um, I, I, I think by and large. It's one of the areas where you have a lot of discussions still, because they took it all, all away for housing, so. Um. Yeah. It's a policy decision, but right now, uh, just like a, a tool shed, we wouldn't regulate as I have, unless it's a garage also.
Uh, Commissioner Mirem, I saw you come on video there, did you have something you wanted to come in with?
Yeah, yeah, I'm a little torn. I'm a little bit torn. Um. I, I, I know Mr. Brown and worked with them past capacities and trust his judgment. And we really don't have a lot of foot to stand on. As far as code goes. But then also, I, I see the need uh, for some guidance from the city on. What type of trailers are allowed, so I'm a little bit torn. Between the two, um. And so. I guess I'm looking to, to the city for a little bit. Guidance on. On that, on that issue.
Yeah, I mean, since we've been. From what I recall. Um. I'm just trying to think of different examples, we, we usually see construction trailers, we do see, um, like, you know, the shipping containers used at different sites. Uh. I'm sure there's been in the, you know, we see model homes, of course, and I'm sure there's been an example of an RV used at one point. I don't recall whenever being used, at least in my tenure here. Um. And so it's a, it's really a policy decision of like. And it's probably a much bigger discussion like we could have in a little while here is, like, moving forward, do we want to have? Requirements around. That you can't have RVs, for example.
So I don't, I don't. I might be a little bit out of line here, but I. I don't see this as a problem with what type of trailer it is, I think that's a completely, like, that's the discussion for later this evening or for policymaking. Um, that doesn't matter, there, there was a, we said yes, this, a trailer could be there. And we didn't define that it couldn't be an RV, and then it outlived its welcome, or it was traded during its welcome, so, but then it outlived its welcome. And once its welcome was outlived, we said, okay, you got to take care of it, and then another one showed up instead, and now we're, we're traveling backwards. Um, to. Set it right, is what I'm. Perceiving from this. So our decision is whether we're going to travel backwards and make it right with the two, travel backwards and make it right with one, or say no, your time limit's over, is that?
I mean, that's up to you guys.
I, I see it very similar to that, but in that. We have the decision to allow an extra one, and when we make that decision to allow an extra one, I think that's where these other variables, at least for me, come into play. Is, okay, if we're going to add an extra trailer, does that mean it creates more of a possible theft issue? Does that mean that it creates more of any kind of issue that you have, just when you put a temporary structure on any sort of site? Uh, regardless of what it might look like, I don't think that we should. At least, at this current point in time, with what the code says, regulate what. It does or doesn't look like, but I do think that. By allowing a second one, we do have to look at what implications that. That comes with, you know, do we allow this on other sites, um, you know, are we going to say that this does start to look like an encampment? Because you do have too many trailers there, these are the things that I'm considering. By adding a second trailer above what's allowed in the code, um. You know, if we were looking at this. As the very first trailer. You know, and making that decision, you're right, I don't think any of that would come into play with uh, what. You know, we're talking about, but we're not looking at first trailer, we're looking at it as a second trailer, and what does that mean? Um. So for me, I'm personally at this point inclined to say, hey, let's allow both trailers until a time where uh, another site. Uh, on the property can be opened up for things like. A rest period, you could throw a desk in there or a table to throw plans on, um. You know, maybe even a working toilet, so, um. I think that seems to be a compromise that still uh, is. Flexible to the needs of the developer, um, and what's going on now, um, but also trying to be consistent in how we apply the code across the board, um. Going forward.
And I agree with most of your comments, I think what Steph was trying to tell us was this is somewhat of a temporary situation. With special circumstances. Project has been delayed because of. Finance, COVID, and all the other reasons, so I like the compromise that staff has come up with. To make this workable for this particular situation until we have one policy.
I guess time, time to turn around, um. I see the need for the uses. Um. And I, I don't think, as, as we said, that. That now's the time to decide how, how the looks, that's, that's another. Another day, but. Uh, we, the code, there's nothing in the code, they could. They could ask for a permit and get a, a. A structure or put a trailer on. And they could ask for a second one. There's nothing in the code that says you can only have one or two, am I correct, or three, or?
There's nothing in the code also, though, that says that we have to put that unlimited number.
True, true, but what I'm saying is, we haven't, we haven't ahead of time said. We don't want more than two, or one, or whatever, we have not gone there, so. That leaves it open to say that, well, there might be a time when we would allow two, i.e., you know, cir- circumstance. I'm uncomfortable with the compromise to force them to turn a condominium unit into an office with. I don't want to buy a condo that's had money boots in and out of that thing, uh, and it's already been used, um. I don't believe, I know we have model homes, and we're trying to use that as a, as an example. But model homes that I've seen are not construction offices. They are, they're. They are, they're staged for sale. And so I'm uncomfortable with saying, well, when you get a unit, now you have to turn that into a working office. That's a little bit too legislative for me. Um, and granted, the, the trailers of the nature that are there, um. May not look that good, but my goodness, they could park the ugliest, hugest dump truck on that lot. The whole time that that thing is there and there would be no complaints, or there might be complaints, but. There's nothing in the code, so ugliness really can't be a standard that we're going to use. Um. I mean, it could be argued that this, that the site looks ugly anyway, just because of the stage of construction. And going to the work, they will be swinging hammers soon because they're, they've got forms, they'll be pouring concrete soon. Um, they're ready for that. I saw it today. Um. Anyway, I don't know what all, all that said, I think I'd just be in favor of letting them do the two trailers. And they're going to go away. We want that site done. Uh, I drove, we all drove by a long time. Wondering what was going to happen with it. And now it's moving. Um. And then down the road, it would, if we want to say, okay, you can only have. You know, one or two, whatever of, um. Trailers or, because they aren't always trailer, like Kelly says, some of them are those Conex units. They drop on the ground and with a theft going on. Um. I wouldn't want to leave anything out. And there's, there has been a lot of work, uh, that's been done there and. People are leaving, you know, want to be able to leave too. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents. I would just say, le- leave it as is with the two. Not have the, the caveat that they have to move into. One of the units that turned it into a working office. Um. And it's going to go away. And then we'll do our homework on the other part.
That's sad. I don't think, wouldn't, I'm envisioning the compromise, it's not into a fully. Done unit, it's into, you know, something that has cover and a, you know, a place to, you know.
But the thing is, when they're building them, they're not gonna, they've got three units they're building, they're not going to build one of them to a certain. Place and stop and then build the other.
Right, as they're building, you know, they move their table with, their holding table of plans on or what.
They're going to move right along with construction.
And they need to finish it so they can start selling.
Sure, and that's, yeah, I, I never envisioned, in my mind at least, one of a, a finished one being converted to an office necessarily. Mine was just. Get it to the point where if they need a place, you know, the, the whole thing was they needed a place to sit down and put out, you know, kind of places to sit down and put out plans. That that could be achieved fairly easily and.
But then in three weeks, they're wanting to get, get it fixed up and they're back without a trailer.
Sure, but, you know, but that, what they may be under the next place.
But like what you're saying is more like an engineering office, which is pretty standard.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah.
Well, who would have guessed that we would probably be most split on this of all topics? Um.
Makes it fun.
I could agree with Jerry's issue.
Uh, I see some other heads, uh, shaking, so, um. I mean, if we have all come around to where we feel good, or at least most of us do, um. All we need is a motion. Gotta see what the. Like, wake this thing up. Twenty-four, zero, two, one, if you're looking for it.
Twenty-four, oh, two, eight.
Two, eight, two, one of the original.
Yep.
Um. No, I'm looking for the. What it is that we. Conditions one and two. That's what I'm looking for. Conditions of approval, all right, based on the staff. Um. So they have appealed this, uh, staff decision. Um. So if we cancel out in the motion.
I think, I think you're, if you're looking to make a motion to approve both trailers is how you're looking for.
Yeah, I'm trying to think.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be issuing a new final order under the appeal file. Allowing for both trailers.
Oh, okay.
And, and then we'll, we'll go through and Patrick and I will go through and kind of clean it up and then send it over to Darren. For this final review.
Okay.
I mean, you can, you can get more specific if you want and go down each finding and condition, but. If you just give us that as the motion, I think that'll give us direction on what to do. And then we'll have Darren double check our work.
Okay. So you want the motion on that, then I would.
I would like whatever motion you want to make.
Okay, then I would make a motion that on this, uh, appeal, that. We allow both trailers to continue to be there. Think that's. And the staff will rework the. The whole final order.
Some news. Was that a second?
Second.
All right, we have a, uh, motion from Commissioner Crosby, a second from Commissioner Myram. Uh, all favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, aye.
All right, uh, motion carries. Moving.
So is that a, was that a four to two vote for the minutes?
Yes. It was. Uh, thank you all. I think it's clear that we have, uh, much to talk about in a little bit, which is, uh, right now, Kelly.
Yeah, so this, this is a work session, uh, no gearing, anything like that. Um, as you'll recall, back in November, I think it was November, yeah, November twenty-seventh. Patrick and I, uh, have brought a work session before you about code amendments. And since that time, the Clear and Objective Audit has been. Finished and, um, adopted by the council. If you go onto our website, it's still not codified, unfortunately. I don't know what's going on with that. The. The company that does it has had it for like four months and hasn't codified it, so we're look, we've been looking into that actually last week, um, so hopefully that'll be done pretty soon and. Uh, that, that Clear and Objective Audit also contained changes for the transportation section in the code. Um, around the transportation system plan work that we had done and adopted in two thousand twenty-three. We're also currently working on code amendments related to fines and code enforcement actions as directed by the city council. So that's going to be a, subcommittee is going to be convening on that. Uh, Chair Wagoner has been asked to join that subcommittee. And so that will be looking at modifications to. Boy, title seventeen, title fifteen, and a couple other titles as well, including title eight. So that, that will mainly be looking at the titles that. The code enforcement position that we created that's in development services that that person's enforcing. So we're going to be looking at. Standardizing our procedures, um, standardizing the fine amounts, and then looking at it more escalating scale of fines for repeat offenders. Um, and that was at the direction of the city council, so we're working on that as well. Uh, as you'll remember from November, we had a list of other items. So a couple of the items are before you tonight, fence and retaining walls. Um, and then temporary uses and structures. At, at future meetings, we'll be also talking more about urban forestry standards, drive-through requirements. Commercial, industrial accessory building standards and major utilities, which are like cell towers. Um. Our cell tower section, our drive-through section, some of these sections are just decades old and they, they have not been touched and they need to be revisited. Um, so before you tonight is fences or retaining walls and temporary structures and uses. I'll start actually on the temporary uses and structures, um, and that's because we were just talking about it. So city administration, actually, with the restaurant, um. The fire that occurred at Ria's, um, at Sandy Family Restaurant. That actually got us thinking about the temporary uses and structure section more. Um, there was a kitchen fire and they needed to. Put up a temporary food cart basically so that they could continue operations. Um, that was just removed a couple of weeks ago now that the kitchen's been fully restored, but, so that was out there for, I think, eight or nine months. Um, so that's one thing we wanted to address. Um, currently, the temporary structure section, if you look at the code. Says that the structure has to be in connection with the building or sale of the dwelling and land, or the construction of industrial and commercial facilities. So a strict reading of that code, um, and our attorney agreed with it, is that you wouldn't be able to allow something like. A quick setup for a kitchen, um, in the event of an emergency like what happened at Sandy Family Restaurant. So. We want to make it more clear in the code that it would also be allowed for construction of parks and also in the case of emergencies. So a couple, a couple other ones that came up during COVID, actually, um. The Sandy Funeral Home had to put. Storage for refrigeration outside of it, um. By the code, we couldn't allow it. I just approved it anyways, obviously, for the reasons that we needed to. Um, and then also when the fires occurred. And, uh, about ripple broke and burned down some of the forest service offices for about a year, there was temporary storage facilities. On the old AC parking lot that the city just purchased, and they sat out there for about a year with all their equipment that they had evacuated out of there. So. There's just other scenarios. City administration wanted to make sure that these other random scenarios that have been occurring. We can accommodate and not just kind of look the other way and actually accommodate them in the code. Um, so that's, that's kind of why, that's the impetus for why we're bringing this section before you. I think in addition to that, there's a lot of things that we need to add to it. I think those code sections are just very vague, um. Doesn't really give a lot of direction for staff on how to review temporary uses and temporary structures. Um, so some of the, some of the things you could consider. Um, I think temporary structures should have more considerations for how we manage them and how we approve them. If we want Sandy's style, uh, which I think has been a great addition to Sandy since two thousand eight. And the city's investing a lot of money and private property owners are as well. Uh, with urban renewal funds and with private investments, I do think we should have more regulations around temporary structures around them. Um, as you see tonight, there's temporary structures that last for years. And so I think it's, I think it's kind of naive to think that we shouldn't be regulated. I really do think we should be. Um. I think there's some other requirements that we need to be mindful of with temporary structures such as ingress and egress out of them. Um. Utilities, for example, we've had questions in the moratorium of, oh, can I put a temporary structure out and hook it to the sewer system? No, you cannot. And so I think there's requirements that we need to be mindful of that, uh, in this section as well. Um, and then there are some cases like the temporary construction trailer up on this loop. They're actually connected to the sewer system. We allow that because they paid their sewer SDC for that property. So they paid that, accounted as an ERU. Once that trailer is removed, the house will then connect, it's already been paid. So there's just things like that. And then temporary uses, I think we need to be more mindful of what we're approving with those as well. Um, there's been a lot of questions and a lot of concerns that have been brought up around temporary uses the last few years. The Sandy Invitational Chance on Carving Event, which has been a successful and has been a great addition to the community. Um, and which I thought is a great event. Um, and it doesn't go on without concerns that are raised by the public for why we're doing road closures and how those impact businesses. That's why this year we brought back the road closures to the city council because they had received a lot of complaints. Um, same thing with the farmer's market that happens. They're closing road now. That was approved by council. Uh, we've had a few instances where fabric structures have been blown by the wind and not been properly secured. So we need to make sure that that's in the code. Um, another one that's very interesting, and, uh, Patrick and I have just been working on this recently, is the Oregon Fire. Marshall regulates the sale of fireworks. And so we have to make sure that their permit is valid through the Oregon Fire Marshall. And the, so when I started implementing almost twenty years ago, there was a lot less coordination on these temporary uses and temporary structures. I feel like. Other agencies and different departments are now getting more involved. So I thi- I think the code should reflect. That, uh, collaboration. So that kind of gives you kind of a high level overview of that section. Uh, the other section. Which is, I, I think a little more simple is fences and retaining walls. So. This is actually something that, uh, Tracy, uh, Brown and myself worked on, I think. I think I might have put it in the, can I put it on the notes here? Oh, in two thousand fifteen, we actually had a work session with the planning commission, November two thousand fifteen. We had a work session with the planning commission on this very subject. Um. So the main takeaway with this is to give more flexibility. For property owners, especially residential, but also commercial and industrial. When there's topography on the side. So we have a lot of steep slopes around Sandy and currently the fence and retaining wall regulations don't. Uh, anticipate slope when you look at the regulations. So what I've tried to do, um, and which I've shown with the diagram on page two of the staff report. Is, and this is the same diagram we used back in two thousand fifteen, is. To allow slightly higher fence and retaining walls when they're a combination of the two together. And so in the first example, if there's a fence on top of a retaining wall, the. Uh, like in a rear yard, for example, right now, the code would say that you can't go above eight feet. This would allow it to go up to ten feet. And then if the retaining wall and fence. Were not on top of each other and there's a minimum setback, horizontal setback of two feet between the two, you could potentially even go up to twelve feet. And so what ends up happening a lot in Sandy right now, now that we're running code enforcement out of that department, I'm overseeing is that. There's so many violations of this around Sandy that. It's. It's, do you want to push like a, 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 a square object? Through a round peg, or do we want to just adapt the code to meet, I think, what property owners really need or want? And so that's my attempt here is. There's so many violations out there anyways, and I think for the most part, the violations make sense in that. There's a big slope difference between two properties and the lower property wants to build a retaining wall and fence. Um, and it makes sense. And right now, the only, the only way to accomplish that is to go through an adjustment or variance process. Or to just build it and see if you get caught. And so I, I think, I think we need to kind of reanalyze that and look at that and think what actually makes sense. Um, should we be allowing for taller fences and retaining walls in certain circumstances? So that kind of covers what the main thrust of this is. The other thing I do think is kind of important. I don't know, maybe this is just a pet peeve of mine and maybe nobody else agrees with me. Um, but I put it in there for consideration tonight. Is that I think front yard fences should not be galvanized metal. Um, especially chain link. It's really not much more expensive, if any more expensive now to do fences with a. Like a powder coating on them, so they can either be green or black is what we, the two colors we typically recommend. Um, we actually added that as a code requirement in the Clear and Objective Audit that if you put in. A storm detention facility like with a subdivision, you put in a powder coated fence around it or some other fence, but not a galvanized fence. And we've been kind of requiring that, just telling developers to do that, and they've been doing it for decades, so. I didn't really see this much of a. I, nobody ever really pushes back. Um, the one exception to that, I think, is we do get from time to time people coming with the hog wire with framed with wood. I think these are becoming more popular, like. In, uh. And I don't mean this as a negative thing, but I think it's becoming more popular in like cities where people want to think of themselves as farmers. So they put kind of this fence up that kind of looks, it's reminiscent of something you'd see like on a farm. Yeah, exactly. But you're like, you know. In southeast Portland or something, or southwest Portland.
Ben.
Yeah, or Ben.
Yeah, I know.
But I, I do think, and I put a picture here in the staff report of one, just so everybody knows what I'm talking about. I do think they're actually pretty attractive and pretty cool. So. In that circumstance, I wouldn't want to limit galvanized metal fencing because I think it's actually a really cool fencing material. Um, but that, that's the other thing, maybe nobody agrees with me on that, but I just thought I'd throw it out there as the other main change in this section, so. And that's my, uh, overview of my staff report, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Um, well, we're just in work sessions, so, uh, why don't we start where Kelly started and, uh. I'll open it up, uh, let's talk about temporary structures. Um. Kelly, just for a little clarification between the two. Temporary uses still have structures in them. They can still, temporary use is basically essentially the same thing, just ninety day period.
I would agree.
And then if it's above ninety days, as it's. And then if it's above ninety days, as it's written now, it has to be used for construction or sale.
Correct. That's how I've interpreted it. Yeah, so a temporary use could have a structure associated with it. So like, for example, for the fireworks, right, and they have temporary structures.
What's an example of a temporary use without a structure?
I think the Sandy Chainsaw Carving Event, did that have a structure associated with it? It might have, might have had a tent, I know last.
They wouldn't have to.
It wouldn't have to, and last year when I attended it, I couldn't this year because I had another, I had family obligations, but last year when I attended it, there was no structure down there that I remember. There might have been like a pop, like one of those ten by ten pop-up tents, but, um. Yeah, I, I would agree, most temporary uses do have some sort of structure associated. And most temporary events are limited to a day or two or a couple of weeks at the most. Most, I, I don't think there's any that have been ninety days.
And then there's more structure types allowed under the temporary use versus the temporary structure. For instance, tents.
Well, I mean, currently, it could be argued, I guess, that the temporary structure. If a tent, I guess, could be, based on the conversation we had during the hearing, a tent could be. A temporary structure for a year, I guess. Because you could claim it's for the building of land and place your materials under it. Although I don't think we should be allowing that, just to be clear.
So would code enforcement be looking at these structures?
Yeah, so once we had this code refined, um, yeah, our co- Chris, our code enforcement officer and involvement services, he would. He would be making sure that people adhere to the final orders. And so if it doesn't come down after a year, then get a warning letter from him to remove it or apply for a renewal.
So what was the, the cooking trailer at Sandy Family Restaurant considered?
That was considered a temporary structure, um. It was actually kind of interesting because I had just gone through a big car wreck, and so the car, the. Insurance even for my car took like four or five months to get figured out. And so I had told Ria at the time, I need to give you a year because it's probably going to take four months or five months. And it did, and then I'm taking a long time for the insurance.
Yeah.
And uh, so that's what we did it under, because we, we kind of assumed it was going to take a while.
Right.
But that, that was a temporary use.
Temporary structure.
Structure, but was it a temporary use?
I don't know, I guess it could be argued that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think.
It could also have been, it could have also gone through the food cart permitting process.
Right.
However, the t- the city administration wanted us to come up with like a quick solution. Like within a couple of days, and so the food cart process, you know, for a new food cart site, because it's not in an existing pod. You'd have to go through the land use notification process and everything else. Under the temporary structure. As Tracy pointed out in the last hearing, it's an order, you know, it's a type one. So I, you know, once she submitted all the materials, I think I issued a decision in like two days, yeah.
I'm just trying to think.
We were just trying to make the, the best out of a bad situation, essentially.
But essentially it was related to the building or repair of the, the, right, essentially.
Yeah, the use was the restaurant bar and the structure was the food cart. You know, so that's how we ran it through a temporary structure.
Yeah, but like the fireworks would be a temporary use and a temporary structure.
But it would be, but we just run it under the temporary use section, yeah.
Okay, so we made a. If two are involved, we kind of pick the big, the bigger one and.
Well, as, as Chair Wagoner pointed out, the, the main difference is the temporary uses for up to ninety days and a temporary structures up to a year. And previously in the code, the, the main difference was the temporary uses. Kind of for events and stuff like that, where temporary structure was just for construction. Although we're trying to broaden the definition because of scenarios. Like COVID and the fires and Ria's, yeah.
And at least for me, as I started thinking about this and what kind of Kelly was going over, as we start to think about. Uh, applying different standards to these structures. That over ninety day period is where I really want to look at that versus, you know, the folks who are throwing up a tent for a weekend for an event in the park. I really don't want that construction needing to construct a Sandy style tent, you know, like. I think that's a little overkill, but you know, if it's going to be there for ninety days or more, like, let's make it look, you know, somewhat presentable. Um, as we go through, so I guess I'll just kind of kick things off a little bit, um. As Kelly was talking, the, the big two things, there's lots of things that obviously stood out, but the big two things for me. Were emergency situations, which uh, Kelly mentioned. You know, I'm thinking fires, I'm thinking earthquakes, probably not so much flooding in the area, but. You know, folks are coming in from a lot of different agencies, uh, they're bringing in, you know, uh, mobile setups, cell phone setups. Um, you know, housing setups, you mentioned mobile ward, mobile manager centers, showering centers, all of these types of things. Um. And these in a lot of cases are things that are, um. Pre-done, pre-made with public funds, um, through the government and, um. So I think as we kind of put them here, and a lot of those in some situations, especially, you know, things like fires, if they have been bad. You know, earthquakes, those types of things, um, could be around for a while, and so for me. I don't necessarily think that Sandy, you know, whatever. For the sake of it Sandy style regulations, we want to apply to these structures, should be applied to the same way in these emergency structures. Um, as, you know, let's say, um, you know, somebody setting up for construction or, um. I can't even think of another thing besides construction where somebody might want a temporary structure for that long a period, um. You know, retail or whatever, it happens to be some kind of long-term event, um. You know, I think those definitely need to have more restrictions applied to them, um. But I think we need to be, especially when it comes to ADAs, well, especially if it's open to the public, um. But these other emergency type vehicles, um, and structures that would be coming in, allow a little bit more grace. Um. The other is that, uh, the events in the temporary use for me, and I'd like to see, um. Basically them kept available, I think. Um, events in Sandy are the way that we increase our tourism and increase our economy, bring people to the area. Grow businesses, do all sorts of things, I think events help our community a lot and, um. They're expensive and, you know, a lot of times it's, uh, folks within our community who don't have access to a lot of overwhelming funds. To go and throw these events, and so I'd like to keep them, um. As successful as possible to those folks. Um, while still being, uh, safe and keeping them open to people as well. Yeah, so those are my initial kind of two thoughts based on what Kelly was saying.
I wonder if we actually need a special section in here for emergencies. Rather than just lumping it in with temporary.
And if, if we want to look at timelines, uh. You know, emergency declaration tied to an emergency declaration for a lot of these, plus a certain period of time.
Yeah, unfortunately though, a lot, yeah, I think you were going to say, I'll let you go first.
I have a big concern about that. I, we don't want to wait for a, a different government and agency to declare an, uh, an emergency. Or to have a declaration that he has to allow and that then costs the city something. That, that's a, we don't want to wait, there, there can be a critical condition that is director's discretion. There can be other language we use rather than a declaration of emergency.
The declaration doesn't have to be, the city can declare a declaration of emergency though.
Yeah, but not because Ria's got a fire.
No, but that's not the type of structure I'm talking about. We don't need temporary FEMA structures and temporary housing because of Ria's fire.
You have to be very careful using language that's used for these other scenarios. And that puts, that really puts our department into a shoe.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to that piece, I'm talking strictly the emergency vehicle piece. I'm talking strictly the cell phone towers that come in in the event of the fire knocking something out or an earthquake. I'm talking, you know, those mobile shower things that are, I'm talking mask care. Uh, you know, types of things, I'm, and for me, that's separate than these other things. Um, and I think that there, I would like to specify the both. And so that way, because I hear what you're saying, we don't want to eliminate that piece, I just want to allow for these other things.
Yeah, they never actually declared an emergency during the fires.
Yeah.
That was actually never a declaration of emergency, which is.
But it could have been.
It should have been.
And should have been, right, like just because something didn't happen doesn't mean that it couldn't be the requirement.
But for, but his steps to get our city to declare an emergency means he needs to call the ma- and the mayor, there needs to be a special. There's all these steps that have to happen, or we don't put pigeonhole and we leave it a little bit, leave a little more room. For, and that's all, I. I haven't, I work for the administration of a city, so I, uh, have a heart for what it is to wait for that language.
Yeah, I don't think actually our EOC has ever been activated.
I think, doesn't the mayor and city council members have certain privileges during emergencies to. Cause things to happen without having a meeting even.
I think the mayor. Right, the ma- the mayor has executive privileges, but I think to Commissioner Bullen's point. They've never activated the OC.
Oh.
So, the pandemic was declared an emergency by the governor. And the wildfires were like declared an emergency in like Estacada and Summerton. But not, neither event was ever declared an emergency in Sandy, so, I, I, yeah.
Well, I think. That's the problem now. Is just because something hasn't followed the way it should be, doesn't mean we should write it out. I'm working in emergency management, working in different emergency structures. It allows for, it, it should be designed to allow for these things and to allow for these specific circumstances. It shouldn't be designed to prevent it, it's not designed to prevent, it's designed to allow for these special permissions. And if we have our city set up and we're not doing things, we're doing it wrong, is the problem. And so, um, we don't have to use it, it was just an easy way for us to say, hey, if this happens. This breaks free this section of code that you no longer have to worry about. If we want to come up with a different way, um, that can be evenly applied, I'm all for it, just a suggestion.
So there's a typical, this is from my own learning, typical. Let's say there is a, a mass fire and they bring in one of those shower units. Are they typically used to go into the city and say, oh, we need to get a permit? To park this in your city, is that their normal thinking?
I mean, they should, they should, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious. And I may show up and they may ask for it a couple of days later, probably, but. You know, they may get it on the road first, but it should be that way, yeah.
Yeah, because with like water retentions and stuff like that now with our public person, they should be asking for that. Like they shouldn't just go hook up and be pumping water when that water might be needed for other uses.
Yeah, but I had wondered about the use of the word emergency as if we needed to define it more. Does who, who determines what an emergency is? The way it's just written just says, or in conjunction with an emergency, and the example is a kitchen fire, well, is that a kitchen fire in my house? However, I think we might, we might need to, I don't know what else to put on, you know, adjectives or whatever. But it just seems that it's not that clear. For, because, you know, the old sign, your poor planning is not an emergency on my part, so.
That's true. And there may be different people who need to authorize it, maybe police related or fire related, not just the mayor. Emergency is a very broad spectrum to put things in, and it can be very subjective depending on. I, the fire at Ria's, I'm sure was an emergency situation. Doesn't constitute, you know. A big discussion with us until today. Um, so I agree with Jerry, kind of narrowing it down. And having an, some sort of. Oversight as to what would be considered a community emergency sort of situation, and then where the protocols for that lay.
There's no, it's not defined, is it, in terms, definitions, word emergency, I wouldn't expect it to.
I mean, it will be, it's defined in the dictionary, which is what the code looks like, that long code. I mean, I think, I think to me, a better person to declare the emergency would be the city manager.
Right.
Mayors change more often, they're not as, they're not as coordinated with myself. Um, yeah, that's, and when the, when the mayor leaves, it's not always designated if there's somebody that's stepping in for the person. And the city manager leaves for a while, they always declare somebody to be the temporary city manager for the department, so.
So in that, in that case, would it be? Like the, the, the kitchen fire at Ria's. You would go to the city manager and say, would you please declare this an, uh, a, an emergency so we can get a temporary structure?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
That'd be just one of his responsibilities. And that does move the definition onto his subjective.
To me, I'm getting, getting back to that definition, I. I think, I think there'd be. Should be a better term for that, because while it may have been an emergency the night of. Fires out, you know, what is the emergency at that point, you know, what's considered the emergency at that point, you know, and it's maybe. Um, so I, 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 and I think that's some confusion overall, and so I think in those sort of circumstances. Saying something like, um.
Harship?
Yeah, like a, exactly hardship would be a good one, um.
Maybe impact on livability in the community.
Sure, uh, councilor mate, has this hand up? Sorry if it's been up for a while.
Oh, no worries, I didn't know if I was able to give feedback in this. Um, just because I spent five years on that, on, you know, where you guys are sitting, I remember seeing some code and Jerry, you just started to mention it. Um, I remember reading in case of an emergency for a permitted, whatever that is. It, they could be placed on property before the application and approval, but it was designated under a set number of days. So if, you know, for instance, the fire at Ria's, they're not asking for permission to put that trailer there. They're just going to put it there because they needed, it happened in the middle of the night, so they put it up. And they had, let's just say that the code would say they have five days to get the application in. And then the, and then the planning department decides whether that emergency is, is strong enough to have. That temporary use, you know, activated, or if it's going to need to be removed. And but that allows the person who's having the quote, emergency to do what they need to in that moment. But then they have to be, uh, dictated by a timeframe to get the application turned in and be approved by the city management. Sorry, I just want to throw that in there.
Thanks.
Yeah, we do have retro or permits for our treat, per treat, per hazard trees, um, I think that's what might be being allotted to there. You could certainly do something like that, I do think sometimes, um. For like the, uh, funeral home example, I think that would have been fine in that case. I do think with kitchens, it gets a little bit more difficult, um. I remember when that happened, they didn't, the person. Uh, Ria did a, a very smart thing, she consulted with a guy that had done a lot of food cart facilities in Portland, she like hired him. And he came out and told her how to set up, but there was some obstacles with the connection to the cleanout. For the sewer. Um, and making sure there was a grease trap interceptor on the cart. Um, and then there was also some obstacles around the electrical. So I, I think with some, with some temporary emergency things like storage for Ripplebrook or the morgue, those are probably fine. But I do think when it deals with kitchen and you have the potential, the last thing we want is to have another kitchen fire. At a place that just had a kitchen fire, so I think, I think we just need to be careful about when we allow that and when we don't.
Another emergency.
Yeah. And they were great to work with, but there was some things that we had to kind of work through as a team, like the city and. Her consultant and her, to kind of figure out quite.
It would be nice if there was a way. To apply those other applicable city standards. If we could create that in, so, you know, kitchen, obviously there's an easy one with food carts, but you know. Office buildings, other, you know, like office structure has other. Office pieces to it. I don't know if there's anything special about having an office. It seems like four walls, like you have deadlines or something. Um, but whatever that temporary structure happens to be. It's we can closely relate it to whatever those city policies are, either city code already is.
Would that be kind of like a wording above in the uses? You know, temporary shall comply with Title eight or some Title fifteen. Organized code to have some language like that, cause that would, in a temporary structure. That it would reference that the structures need to follow certain codes that could be itemized out like a.
Yeah, number three is doing that for the building codes. And temporary structures.
That's one, one element. And that may be enough to cover everything. Except it's only, it only addresses ingress and egress.
Yes, it's proper exiting in ADA is what it's addressing.
Yeah, but it's not. Like if a temporary structure, there's no square footage on this, right?
No.
So, you know, would it need to be? Um, sprinklered. Would it need? Others, other stuff.
Right, you know, if somebody's sleeping in it, all of a sudden that changes, well, probably mostly egress, but. You know, their fire codes and stuff.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't. My intention was not to have any scenario where somebody's sleeping in a temporary structure unless it's a FEMA regulated structure. So I think we want to clarify that. And from recent city council discussions, I, I believe that's where the city council would land on that as well.
That's perfect for me.
So none of those fireworks booths have kids sleeping in the night for security?
Not according to our code.
Uh, we've been asked and told, no, we're not gonna allow people to sleep there. Kids sleeping on.
This is kind of a side comment that I was thinking about earthquakes and one of the biggest dangers of earthquakes is. Gas in homes, et cetera. Have we ever thought about having the kind of device that. Has automatic shut off for gas on new buildings? I know it's, it doesn't deal directly with this, but I'm just asking a question.
Not that I'm aware of. Unfortunately, there's all sorts of things I would like to require that, you know, currently. But a lot of them, to be fair, a lot of them cost a lot of extra money, so.
Looking at number four under structures, then we'll back to our fireworks booth. Shall be served by utility services. Does that mean it has to be?
Well, no, it says or shall somebody utility serve. What we don't want is people legally, this is mainly for sewer, but I don't want us people illegally connecting to cleanouts. And we've had that, we've had that happen over the last couple of years.
Yeah, no, I can understand that, but I'm thinking of, of a different kind of a temporary structure. That falls under here that may not need electricity or anything. But it says.
Oh, I go even, I, I got it.
Shall be served by utilities.
So you're saying only when necessary, when they need utilities.
Yeah, or something like that.
Couldn't that show in their utility service plan though? It's nothing.
But to have to go back to fireworks thing, you know, you're trying to set up a booth and I gotta turn in a plan that says I don't need electricity. I might need a fire plan, but.
Yeah.
It's, 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 it is an interesting, it's a really good point, uh. There, there are also some issues that like with our regulate, I'll just bring this up so you guys know a little bit. So with people illegally tapping into cleanouts. You know, you have your family members come over and they sleep in the RV on the side of your house for a week. It, if we start to have too much of that, that creates an issue with our consent decree regulations. Around allowing additional connections and allowing additional fluid. And so if, if that happens, or if that becomes more of a regular norm, or more people are doing that, which I know in some cities they are. We could run into a situation honestly that we're getting sewer permit violations. And the reason why is because there's a bunch of people living in temporary situations and connecting to our system. So it's, it's definitely a concern out there.
Sure.
Sure.
We have somebody.
I know, I just know it's not a public testimony. Can I just give a couple? Things of that came to my mind when I saw this.
Sure, we'll pretend it's back to tomato.
Yeah, I think you're pointing out, there's a whole range of types of structures and uh. You know, I'm thinking about the ingress egress number three there. Just, I guess, I'm, I'm only kind of throwing this out there to something to think about. You know, if you're, if you're talking in office, it may be different than if you're talking in a connects box. And I don't think you're gonna find a connects box that's ADA accessible. So that's something to think about. And then the, what Jerry pointed out about the utility connections, when I read that, I read it as. Every connects box needs to be connected to utilities. And which I don't think is the intent anyway, so I think as necessary or needed is the right choice, but that's all I had. So I'm gonna get out of your hair.
Thank you.
No, they're both very good points, thank you. And I think that does get to the heart of kind of what we've kind of been talking about is that there are lots of different uses for these. Temporary structures and they each kind of have a little piece of that, which is I think while we're looking.
Yeah, I get, I mean, I, I threw this together based on past experiences, but yeah, I can work a lot more on it. Do you, so I'm mainly seeing a lot of questions or more comments on the temporary structure section than the temporary uses. So one thing that, so the FEMA structure is a good point. So maybe even like that one on the overnight accommodations. Unless declared state of emergency and so I'll add some language to that, because we did wanna allow FEMA trailers in the situation where. Say a subdivision was to unfortunately burn down or something like that, we would have to have temporary housing. We would wanna have that as an option. Um, so that's a really good point. Um, although I, I do think those states of emergency might actually trump our code anyways, but. Well, I think massaging into ear is a good thing. Um, the one thing I do wanna go back to a little bit, so I hear you on if it's an emergency situation, we'll all define that better. The look of the structure is not as important and I would agree with that. What are we thinking about the look at the structure for? Construction trailers and just things that stay out there for potentially two to five years, like what we were doing with just a little bit ago.
I think going full Sandy's style seems difficult, seeing as how a lot of them are. Pre-made, I mean, I, that being said, I don't think that, I think we should have a standard that's higher than an RV, you know. Um. But if somebody, I, I struggle if somebody has a standard, nice looking construction trailer, making them. Paint it a certain shade of brown and adding a timber across the top, just so it can park here for a couple of months. You know, that seems a little extra. Um, personally, um, but I do think there should be an elevated level.
Well, could you just say, you know, case in point tonight, that they cannot be. Originally manufactured as recreational vehicles, just flat out say it. And that would then still allow a connects, you know, thing to a, to a um. Uh, construction trailer that's actually on wheels. But you know, just square walls and all, that was not created as a recreational vehicle. We said something like that.
Sort of thinking more like a commercial construction trailer?
Right, yeah, just this, it's a connects on wheels, right, you know, just a square, square little thing that. It was not made, it's not being reused, repurposed from a recreational vehicle.
We, I, I have a little bit of a hesitance with that, and it's because with the cost of everything. Where this guy's using, he's repurposing something and in his mind and potentially in mine as well. He's also creating some security for his site. Somebody could be living in there, so don't mess around here at night. So there's some value in that for A, for our work sites, because that's a wide open job site and when it starts to get. Vandalized, that looks worse than a RV. And then also that's gonna cost more when I wanna buy that condo. And him having to get a connects instead of using his RV is gonna cost more when I need to get a condo. And with all of these expenses and these challenges, that I'm concerned about what pathway that leaves for builders. And what expense, expense that leaves for citizens. Now, I think there's gotta be a happy medium, because I don't think it should look like he's been settled in and have skirting on it. Uh, but insulation is good.
No, that's when you hire an outside security company to come in, so you don't have your foreman sleeping there. Or whoever else wanders onto the site and pries the door open. That's why you pay a little bit more and you have onsite security doing that job.
And for me, I think that the RVs actually. Would increase that because it looks less secure than the professional security.
And it's a dwelling assumption of it's a dwelling.
So I, I, I guess it's a different perception.
There would be, there would be the normal variance process. Think if you, if you did say that it couldn't be manufactured. And when somebody had one, I mean, I saw that, I didn't realize that one of those trailers was a toy hauler.
Yeah.
You know, it's easy to strip one of those things out and to have a, a very reasonable equipment storage unit. Um, but maybe that could come through on a um variance request. Some sort that just says, yeah, you can do it, but we need to talk more.
That'd be like fifteen hundred dollar variance.
Do we have a construction trailer permit process?
It's, it's the temporary structure.
So that's what you do with all the, so you don't have a builder, our building inspector go out and make sure it's secure?
No, Terry goes, our building official goes out, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, if, if it's like an office trailer, like the one that Hold Homes is using, it, it. By state building code, it should have ADA accessibility. Cause we can't assume that somebody working in that office doesn't have a handicap. And that's what I tell people all the time, it doesn't need to be a wheelchair.
Yeah.
Just needs to be a, an impairment, you know, man can get into the structure. So now we go and, we go and inspect, we also, he also goes and make sure that the cleanout is hooked up properly and if it needs a grease trap interceptor, it's. Install them. Now, we used to not do all that, but then we ran into issues, so.
I have more to stand on if this backed up, yeah.
Um. For staff approving these, would recreational vehicle be enough for them to say, hey, this is, and this is it?
If we said recreational vehicle?
Like no recreation, no structures previously used for, as a recreational vehicle or designed as a recreational vehicle?
Um, we, we had flushed that out probably a little bit more, but yeah, we, I think it's. I think it's close enough. It's, it's, it's not a housing application.
Right.
So while it would be nice to be clear and objective, if it's not and we take a stance on what it means, then we're fine lately.
And I think, um, I would like to see maybe some of our other language related to maintenance and upkeep kind of be applied as well. Uh, you know, siding falling off of. Trailer molding falling off or, you know, even disrepair. I've seen lots of those. I mean, those office trailers are on. Job sites their entire life and they're just getting beat up and I've seen tons of them that just don't look very good, so be. In good repair, I think would also make sense if we're trying to hold some level standard. I'd rather, I'd rather see something that wasn't an attractive color. In good repair than the other way around, you know, have something that was our color but falling apart.
And don't we have something already written in code for age of, um. Uh, recreational vehicles or mobile structures? There's something to do with age we went over. Ten years or less, I don't remember what it pertained to, but there's an age restriction on. Some of those recreational homes or vehicles or something.
Yeah, that's for manufactured homes.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what's to say they don't drag a single line up there for a construction trailer?
I mean, they're pretty close in a lot of cases.
I was just saying, yeah, I think, I mean, that's not far-fetched. I think some of them are.
Those ones out on the, what is it, two twelve that have been sitting on cinder blocks for decades? They're not manufactured homes, but they're like old houses, something somehow.
I was just wondering about those, like since I was twelve, they.
They're terrible, why are they sitting there?
There's some new ones, just in case you wonder.
Yeah, hope, hopefully none of those show up in Sandy, you know, that'd be great. I, unless you guys wanna give me more direction, I think I got a lot of direction on that, um, where I can go back and start working on this some more. Um, I don't know if you have other things you want to talk to about it.
Well, I think that's good.
That's his entertainment ones.
Right?
Uh, I guess my first big question on this one, Kelly. Is there a world in which a retaining wall is just the base of a fence?
Need to read an example?
Not up against the slope. So for instance, I just want a taller fence, can I just build a little wall under it?
Oh.
There's not a retaining wall.
Not a wall.
Right, that's what I'm, like, I mean, that's what I'm asking is if.
I think even in building code, that's. Uh, there's a retaining wall and then there's a wall, that's a fence, wasn't a wall.
So I guess specifying then that the height is from. The ground level and maybe not the top of the wall. You know, I'm thinking of, I have heard.
So is your, is your, is your concern that they're just trying to get a higher combined retaining wall and fence? But the retaining wall is not actually holding a surcharge?
Yeah.
Of dirt or earth?
It seems like a developer's dream, that loophole, sorry.
That does seem like a pretty good loophole. Yeah, I think we could, uh.
I built a four foot retaining wall, but it's only holding back a foot and a half or two feet of dirt, and then I get to put a made fit foot, it's on top of it.
So the surcharge would have to meet, yeah, I hear your sound.
The fence is on top of the retaining wall. Is there any specific requirement for how it's attached so it's safe?
Um, if the combined height of the fence or retaining wall is over seven feet, then technically it has to get a building permit. Although, like I said, people do them all the time without building permits. And then if it's over forty-two inches off the ground, I believe is the height, then it has to have a fence.
Okay.
So for fall hazards, similar like a deck. I think it's forty-two, could be twenty, might have the measurement wrong.
So if it's set back, they'd have to have a fence for their fence?
No, if the retaining wall is higher than that, it has to have a fence.
Right, and then they set their fence back, the fence would have to have a fence, yeah.
The fence will have to have a fence.
If they're, if the fence is set back or off the retaining wall, like in your picture, but it was more.
Oh, no, that, that, that works. So if there's a retaining wall, then two feet and then a fence?
Yeah.
That means, that means the building code.
But if it was a four foot retaining wall, they wouldn't have to have a separate fence to stop people from falling?
No, cause that fence is protecting people from entering the retaining wall area.
Oh, yeah. You did answer one of my questions, Kelly, I was curious what we had against chain link fence, fences. When I saw the galvanized, but, um. Is, um, are the ones, the chain link fences that are painted, are they not galvanized? Is it painted?
They're galvanized underneath the coating.
Okay. So then that. I'm getting on definitions to make sure that. But somebody doesn't kind of, well, even though it's, it's, it's a painted galvanized, so still galvanized.
Yeah, I think, I think you, I think you could just add a few words that the, the finish cannot be galvanized.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the visible finish, so. Um.
I just, I, and like I said, it might just be me, but I'm just not a huge fan of galvanized. Chain link fencing in front yards. I think it's terrible looking personally. I think in a backyard. Especially if it's like about something like a wetland or something can be fine. Especially if it's like about something like a wetland or something can be fine, but I think up front by the sidewalk. To me, it's.
Although I I've seen ones that don't bother me that are like three feet. Which is 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 a rare galvanized fence. They're just, just a little, they're kind of three feet, you know, I don't. They, yeah, they can, they can be kind of cute, cause you can still stand and look over into the yard and everything, but don't. It'll keep a pooch out from getting on the street. So.
It it the chain link would still be allowed, they just have to be powdered, but it doesn't, it's a lack of it.
Green or whatever. Maybe that's.
It's just the gray portion that will weigh the.
More specific is it can't be the. Visible galvanized.
What's the cost difference between galvanized and powder coated? Anymore, is there?
I don't even know if there is any, I know in retaining wall blocks, there's no difference between. An architectural finish for the face and a flat finish anymore, they're the same price now. So I'd assume it's pretty close.
I think it's the same, I mean, other than you can get old chain link from a construction site for free and probably not.
It's all rusted out. That's what I think I kind of, that's what I'm hoping to avoid. And I, I don't know, to me, it's like, is it getting a little bit? Nitpicky or particular possibly, but. You know, we're we're trying to do the best we can with upping our game with Sandy's style and. And the last thing I'd like to see is like a. I don't know, a metal fence thrown in a front yard that then rusts after a while and everything else, to me, it's just not a good look. That's that's.
But the those um. Hogwire framed with wood, if the wood's not maintained, that can look ugly after a while too. My and another thought is. We've specified the hogwire framed with wood, that is one. Particular thing, so we're saying that that's the only thing. So somebody can't have some other design. That may come up five years from now, um of a pretty acceptable fence.
I think you'd wanna just amend the development code, is what I would recommend. Just like we amended the develop, the Sandy's style with the current objective audit to specify the. Uh siding materials that have been developed since two thousand eight, so it'd be something similar to that. Yeah, the fence, the combined height thing, I think that's an interesting point with the surcharge. That I, it didn't even occur to me until you said that, but it is a really good point. So it'd almost be like. Want to find that we only allow. The the fences above eight feet for the ten and twelve feet scenarios, and there's actually a surcharge needed for the retaining wall. Yeah, I agree, otherwise, yeah, it could get out of hand.
What were the other concerns, I mean, for me, I know before the height, when we were talking retaining walls. Uh was the big concern was, I I'm just trying to remember, I'm thinking back to. The development over by Paolas that had the big retaining wall, I think other issues we had with that were. Drainage, I wanna say, and. Materials used for such a big wall.
Yeah, that was the, that was the. Items that the gentleman that lived to the north of that brought up.
Have we seen those issues enough to where we, they, we should be addressing them? I mean. My thought would be, in most cases. When there's a large retaining wall like that, it probably wouldn't be right up against somebody's property, it'd be on a slope that would lead to a natural area or something along those lines. So it wouldn't be as big of a deal, but I mean, does it come up other times?
I mean, we could require that a retaining wall over X amount of feet. Requires an architectural finish instead of a flat finished. We already require that in subdivisions for retaining walls, and nobody, like I said, they cost the same now, so nobody, they don't care. And they agree that if you have some sort of architectural finish that looks better than just smooth concrete, so.
That's good for them too.
Everybody does it, cause nobody, the developers are like, yeah, that's what I would like anyway, this is something a little bit. Uh more natural looking, especially on the big ultra blocks. Um so you could require something like that, as far as the drainage. I I don't know on the answer to that one.
These all talked about. This section of the code talks about retaining walls that are kind of small, are the bigger retaining walls? Addressed elsewhere?
Nope. That's why they have to come through the variances typically.
For a variance, okay, cause I'm thinking of the one that's where some um Sandy, no. Uh Sandy Heights, Debarco and. Oh shoot, Jerry, the street name, along the ghost. Right through town. Bluff, yeah, where bluff comes down to Debarco. That that development there.
They got a variance.
Forty feet tall.
They got a variance.
Okay, so they would just fall under here, but they get a variance.
They had to go through the.
Yeah, they have to, I mean, there's no way.
Yeah, I don't know how, I've not seen a code yet, at least that allows for like really tall retaining walls through a non-variance procedure, I'm sure somebody's written something really good around that. The hard part though is because a lot of times it deals with housing is you do have to have a clearance check of.
I don't think I've had any other.
Patrick brought up a really good point, um that is a really good point. Uh on materials. We might wanna specify what materials can be required. We did have, did you actually deal with that property, didn't you?
You did.
Oh, well, I did, yeah, there's a guy that built um.
You're pictured, you standing out there like, shaking your head.
He built a retaining wall out of tires, used tires that he got from a junkyard. And. He built it, I think, six or seven feet tall, so he's still within the code, he actually met the code. Um but he didn't put a fence on top of it, but anyways, he built it. He built it onto city and ODOT properties, so I had to go out there and. He had to take the whole thing apart, this was like, I don't know. Eight, nine years ago, he had to take the whole thing apart and move it like seven or eight feet, he built it like seven or eight feet off his property. So he moved it back, and I said to him, that's probably why I was shaking my head in the picture, Terry, this was like. I was like, do you really wanna put the tires back, and he's like, well, is there anything in the code that? Doesn't allow this, and I said, no. But a non-engineered retaining wall at seven feet high says it's going to fall over, and then there's gonna be tires over it. And so, you know, he kind of laughed at that and didn't listen to me and. Built his retaining wall, and then the next homeowner, I don't know, maybe four years later. After he sold the property, didn't disclose that it was a non-engineered retain wall. The retaining wall fell, of course it was going to, everybody knew it was going to, it had a surcharge of hun, you know. Thousands, tens of thousands of pound of dirt pushing against this thing. So it fell, the tires went down the hill onto the city property, onto ODOT property, tires everywhere. Now the backyard doesn't, basically is slumped, because there's a landslide created from the the tire retaining wall. Um so I know that's a long story, but. It was kind of funny, but also kind of crazy, and so, yeah, maybe there's. We should actually specify Shelby. Um. You know, over. Cause the this, the state building code only requires. A permit and a structural engineered specification if the retaining wall is holding. A building surcharge or road. Or utilities, if it's just holding the side of a hill. And it's not impacting any structures above the retaining wall, then the state building code no longer makes them go through a building permit. Which is insane, by the way.
What's the amount of room? That that building has to be set back for it to not be considered impacted?
They just have to prove or show that it's not holding the building up. So say if, say the building's like.
It was put in after the building.
Yeah, say exactly, so say the building's here. You got a, you got a backyard that comes out and then it slopes. This is the exact situation, and then somebody goes, I'm gonna just throw a bunch of tires here. And then all this area is gonna be filled. And it's pushing a surcharge onto those tires. The other thing, as you pointed out, stormwater is running off down the slope, so all the water's pushing on the tires as well. And so eventually, these things get out and fell down the hillside. But because this is just like a open space out here, you know, trees and stuff. There is no requirement to get this engineered. So Terry, the building official, myself wanted him to do like, hey, why don't you get like ultra blocks or lock and load or even pour a retaining wall? And get like just a structural engineer to take a look at it, you're probably gonna want like, you know, a footing underneath to actually hold it in place, well, he didn't do any of that, he just put it up. He just flattened out a piece of dirt, put it on there.
So if somebody wanted to do that again and do it with, I don't know, shoes or water bottles? There's no code that says that we can't make a wall of shoes.
That as long as it stays under a certain height and it's not supporting a structure or rotor utility.
And it's on your property. Which is, you know, it is your property.
Yeah.
Creates disclosure issues, but yeah, that we then get roped into. When the next.
Well, when the tires go down the hill, then it's your problem.
Then it's, why do you ever permit this, well, we didn't permit it, we just. We didn't permit it, we didn't not permit it either, you know, it's, it's just there, so I don't know, it is a good point that Patrick wrote tires over here.
There's something I I just didn't notice missing, I know we talked about it, I just realized it was missing, it was, it was retaining walls. That. Are above other properties, there was a certain distance we were looking at. Trying to establish if you have. Even a four foot retaining wall, maybe not be engineered, but you have a house below it.
If it fails, where is it gonna go?
Yeah, I mean, you could always say, well, that's a. Personal property issue, homeowners. Insurance claim, maybe, but I don't know if it's something, we we talked about maybe. If we could think about something.
Tires come crashing through my, I doubt my homeowners insurance is gonna go, oh, okay.
And it might be something we can think about a little bit more, I think, cause I mean, we brought it up, we didn't know how to address it though. So how many, I mean, that's an absurd, absurd example of a retaining wall, but if you wanted to. Put into the code, what would be allowed? For retaining wall? It wouldn't take a whole lot to cover ninety-seven percent of what's done with it. Means either a poured wall or.
I would agree, a poured wall or a structural wall.
What else would a normal person choose to use?
Normal at whose house?
I mean, you know, YouTube's a funny thing.
That's probably where.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, you know, take some plywood screwed into two by fours in the ground, and you got yourself a retaining wall. You know, like. It wouldn't take much.
Railroad ties, they're, no, that's another one. That. Have a way of falling apart, not degrading, but if they're not.
You put together, yeah.
So I'm just curious if we could write what would be allowable for retaining walls and not have to write a whole book. Of what's normal.
Yeah, you you know, you could do something too, we've done this in other sections of the code. Where it says poured wall, engineered blocks, or other material as approved by the city engineer or the building official or something like that. We've done that with other parts of the code, so I don't see why you couldn't do that here.
That way, there's clearly acceptable things that you can use, and then maybe you wanna go beyond that.
But our building official and engineer, it's like, yeah, tires is not one of those.
Or we need to get a new building official. It's that, or we need to get a new building official.
Or shoes, is not, yeah. Yeah, it's a good point, though, thanks, Patrick. Yeah, it's very interesting with hillside in Oregon, because you know, there is no land side insurance in Oregon, so. There's no landslide insurance, so I. Yeah, if somebody builds something and then it falls onto their neighbor's property. You know, you can go through.
You're out of.
A legal process and try to like sue and stuff, but I do think we could do a few things in the code like this that would at least. Potentially divert some of these from happening down the river.
All right, anybody have anything else, uh Kelly, any other direction you'd like to see?
No, I think you guys have given us some stuff to work on over the summer and. I've been working on the sign code edits, so those will be gone before the council. In the fall, you didn't have a ton there, but I I did add some stuff based on our conversation. Um and then what I, what I probably plan on doing with this is um. Well, you have two options, you give me direction on what you'd like to see, so I I could bring it back as just a legislative hearing and then. We could talk about it more and then come to a second hearing, so we get public input. Or I could bring it back as another work session with one of the other. Um chapters that I listed here. Maybe I could bring it back with, I wouldn't wanna do it with the urban forestry, but maybe I could do it with. The utilities or the drive-through requirements or something, so whatever you would like to say, I'll do either, doesn't matter to me.
For me, I think it depends on how comfortable you are with it. Like if you guys really think you've done an awesome job, you know, that legislative hearing, if you think we're, you know, pretty much nailed it, if you. Dab our questions, I think we're probably open to another work session.
Could be like how much more we add to it with going back or find, and you guys always feel comfortable if you. Um. Come see something, perhaps in your mind, you can always email us.
What I could do too, uh Chair, if you're fine with this, which we haven't done in the past, but there's no reason why we can't. Is after I get to a point in a few months where I think I've made the edits that you want, and I'm more comfortable, I could send it to you. And you could give me direction on whether another work session would be the right way to go, or if you wanna just advance it to a hearing.
Yes.
If you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, sure, and depending on the timing to uh. We could still be honest, yeah. All right, with that, uh thank you all for your input, uh thank you again Jim for providing uh. That uh other feedback on the uh. Cooperates of time, and with that, we'll adjourn, say thirty-seven.
Thank you.